With an overlay of approved ASP, which is shown in red hatch and then proposed ASP shown in green hatch. The map on the left shows sanitary servicing area about thousand and thirteen gross hectares shaded in yellow that will be serviced by the NEST project. As you can see, this project services a significant portion of city's undeveloped lands. The bright blue line on the map, here the cyan line, the blue line, represents the city's pre-annexation boundary. So the map on the right shows that we were able to allow some development to portions of the approved ASP area, which is the red hatched area by utilizing excess capacity contributed by developers through the past Ockmont development. Unfortunately, we have now used up that excess capacity and northeast part of the city has reached its current capacity limit and no new development applications can be received or approved going forward. The area shown in red hatch with approved ASP represents land that were in the city's pre-annexation boundary. They cannot advance any more development without the northeast servicing. The area shown in hashed green have an active ASP application submitted with the city, which is called northeast ASP. And if this ASP is approved, these areas will also require this servicing to advance development. Next slide is actually showing similar to the previous slide, but this one is showing the storm catchment. So if you look at the left-hand side, along the same alignment, you see storm five, which is depicted there in a yellow line. Just as in previously, both maps show the catchment, but this one shows the storm catchment area. The map on the left shows the storm servicing area about seven hundred and thirty-four gross hectares shaded in yellow. That will be serviced by the northeast servicing project. As you can see, this project services a smaller area than compared to the sanitary catchment shown previously, but it is still a significant portion of the city's undeveloped lands. The bright blue line, as in previous map, shows the city's pre-annexation boundary. As development has proceeded, new storm infrastructure and storm water management ponds were have been constructed in the northeast area, which has supported the new development. Within the next five years, it is anticipated that storm infrastructure in this area will be at maximum capacity, just like the sanitary is now, and the development will be unable to proceed until storm project five is constructed. Portions of the existing Jensen Lake and Iron Ridge North ASP areas are dependent on this storm project, but the proposed northeast ASP area hashed in green will also require the servicing to advance development. Therefore, the requirement to advance NEST project is evident to allow development to advance north and east purely from a servicing perspective. Therefore, the background to this can be summarized as follows. The northeast servicing project is a capital project comprising of sanitary, water and storm water services to the northeast part of the city. These projects have been identified as offset levy projects and the need to construct at least the sanitary and storm has been in discussion for over a decade. Northeast part of the city has reached its current sanitary capacity and no new development can be supported without this project advancing, even though there are approved ASPs in the catchment area. Given the background, the objective of this presentation and the report is to provide an update on phase one design and to keep council abreast with upcoming decision points within a few strategic parameters for council's consideration. Phase one includes completing the detailed design of the project and securing tendering services and possibly some construction administration services for the construction phase of the project. Council approved has discussed earlier two million to advance phase one in Q two twenty-two. With phase one has been progressing through detailed design and coordination associated coordinating associated permits and easements, along with collaborative consultation with affected developers. Design was split into two packages due to type of work involved, pipes versus the building, and lift station design has progressed to sixty percent and the pipeline design to ninety percent. The current cost estimate is approximately seven million, includes a fifteen percent contingency for utility package and fifty percent contingency for lift station pack package, which will undergo further confirmation with the planned project scope before proceeding to phase two. And this includes offset levy portion of about ninety-six percent and non-offset levy portion of about four percent. Regulatory approvals have been acquired and acquisition of required easements are still underway, especially the utility right-of-way for lift station with a nearby developer. Anticipate full design of both packages in late fall in preparation for possible tendering to end of the year, of course, with the corresponding funding approval from council. Once phase one is completed, administration will update the project charter to reflect new construction estimates based on our finalized design and the realized cost for phase one, which is anticipated occur in November, December, twenty twenty-four. Subject to future support from council for the project through debt funding following other proposed schedule outline for phase two construction. It is anticipated that updated project charter for phase two to include construction completion phase will be ready for council's presentation in Q four twenty twenty-four, following the northeast ASP first reading on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, subject to completion of all land acquisition as mentioned earlier. If council approves proceeding with construction through debt financing and a borrowing bylaw will be presented in Q four twenty-four with the anticipated full approval in Q one of twenty twenty-five. Followed by the borrowing bylaw first reading, it is expected that tendering services can start in Q four with the expected closure and award in Q one twenty-five, following successful approval of the borrowing bylaw after second and third reading. Construction phase is expected to occur Q two twenty twenty-five to Q two twenty twenty-seven, about two years timeframe. As the project progressed through design, various schedule risks were faced and would not, I will not go through the past and will focus on the residual design risk as follows. The design risk includes the following at present, all regulatory approvals for the storm sewer outfall and the pipe crossing under the river have been received for the design phase. There are some additional notifications that are required to be initiated during the construction phase. Land acquisition for the lift station site, the design of the lift station has has progressed slowly than originally scheduled due to delays and finalization of the lift station site and configuration. The landowner has provided approval for preliminary engineering investigation and the parcel has been finalized pending land acquisition and formal utility right-of-way agreement. Therefore, the design of the lift station has progressed only sixty and carrying a hefty contingency fifty percent, aiming towards the ninety percent completion in the next month, provided the landowner provides URW agreement. Acquisition of the required easements for the pipeline and the utility right-of-ways are underway with anticipated acquisition in the next. There are some residual known cost and schedule risks. Cost escalation and contract availability is a known risk that will be mitigated once the project is standard and cost known. Current cost estimate is projected towards seventy million with a fifteen percent contingency on the utility scope and fifty percent contingency for the lift station as mentioned previously. Schedule could be impacted with northeast ASP approval process, followed by construction project charter and boring by law approval. Finalization of the cost recovery agreement with benefiting landlord for the non-offset portion of servicing that could influence the financing model and subject to council approval when the project charter gets presented. Some opportunities access to mitigate the risk and are suggested here, council approval of future phase two may be subject to completion of design to more than ninety percent, which would provide better cost estimate with the potential to reduce the contingency to ten to fifteen percent for both packages. Confirmation of city's debt capacity with a consideration of other priorities at hand and the northeast ASP approval and all land acquisition related agreements in place. As for opportunities in consideration of the project variable and to support efficient delivery, the project has been separated into two packages for the purposes of tendering, one for the lift station and one for the pipelines. This separates very differing scopes, which are not typically handled by one general contractor. It is anticipated that splitting would help with the contractor procurement pace and possible delivery of the project within schedule and anticipated cost. For the non-offset levy scope, there is a potential to delete the scope if cost recovery agreement is not achievable by allowing this efficiencies and economies of scale will be lost. Now that completes the update to northeast project and anticipated next phase timelines. In the following slides, we will discuss some strategic parameters for council's perusal and consideration prior to making an investment decision towards northeast project in November of this year. The importance of measuring our growth opportunities and staying focused within key growth areas ensures that the ripple effect of decisions are taken into consideration. For example, if you jump the queue into a non-priority greenfield area, you inadvertently take on additional costs that may become unsustainable in the medium to long term, which could affect residents through taxes and capital investment. In short, we will touch on four key strategic parameters that may enable council to make informed decision in the future investment towards this project. First one is the strategic parameter one, northeast and Albert ASP and municipal development plan. Parameter two covers the future debt strategy and growth. Parameter three includes other resources of funding, i.e. grant opportunities and developer contribution to front-ending. And parameter four, council approval of a hold on northeast development. I will now pass on to Christina to present us with the first strategic parameter.
Thank you, Donnie. I will now discuss this this first strategic parameter, which involves the municipal development plan and some of the associated area structure plans within the area. The city has approved statutory plans which prioritize the city's long-range development in these areas and the and the associated investment required. In twenty twenty-one, the city of St. Albert adopted a new municipal development plan called Flourish. The MDP provides a strategic long-term direction for growth and development within the municipality. As a statutory planning document approved by council, it serves as a guide for administration to evaluate and implement the policies and programs that align with this vision. As St. Albert aims to grow to a hundred thousand people over approximately twenty-five years, the city will need to prioritize future investments. In the twenty twenty-one version of the MDP, the decision was made to focus on investments that would support the development of additional employment lands, moving towards a seventy-thirty residential to non-residential assessment split. This decision, along with the planned location for the future amenities, led to a prioritization of greenfield development in the west. Next slide, please. At the same time as creating Flourish, the city was exploring the possibility of annexing lands within Sturgeon County. The Annexation Growth Management Study impacted, examined the impacts of growth on the city and assessed future land needs. It assumed a higher than average growth rate of approximately one point six percent per year compared to our traditional growth rate of one point three percent. This difference translates to about an additional seven thousand people over twenty-five years. The study found that the city already had many years' worth of land supply as available as outlined on this slide. It also determined that the financial impacts of the annexation would be manageable if the city strategically invests and develops within the existing boundaries first, then moves to the northeast when necessary. With the FIA completed for the whole of the annexation lands, it assumed an average one point eight percent tax implications to bring on these lands. However, it is important to note that this one point eight percent rate assumes, sorry, relies on the projects being initiated according to the proposed timelines and the development stages outlined in the servicing map. That's kind of what trying to show on this very messy map. Here, any changes to the timelines or expansions of these projects could lead to increased tax and financial implications for residents and businesses. This is because the northeast servicing area lands have a higher percentage of lands dedicated for residential versus employment uses and residential lands have a greater impact on tax rates. The key findings and recommendations of the Annexation Growth Management Study suggest that the city should avoid premature investment in the servicing in future servicing basins. So start off in the blue, then go to the purple and then go to the orange as identified on this map. Instead, it should focus on developing the west first and then move to the northeast when absorbed and then go to the northwest servicing basin. Next slide. In twenty twenty-two, Flourish was updated to include the new boundary established after annexation. At that time, the city reaffirmed its commitment to prioritizing growth within the west and intensification in the mature areas along St. Albert Trail. The decision reflected the findings of the Annexation Growth Management Study, which identified the lands west of Ray Given Drive as prioritization for greenfield growth. These updates aligned with the timelines and growth projections outlined within Flourish. However, Flourish did not fully account for bringing on most of the lands within the northeast ASP or the NEST servicing area. As a result, development in this area is expected to exceed the population growth and job projections of over a hundred thousand people and thirteen thousand jobs, along with associated timelines for that expansion. Next slide, please. Council must carefully consider its strategic priorities, their financial implications and infrastructure requirements as it evaluates investment in the northeast servicing project. The sustainable growth section of Flourish explains why the west is prioritized for outward growth. Expanding westward along with the development of the Lakeview Business District will enhance will enhance employment lands and take advantage of existing infrastructure investments on Ray Given Drive. This approach will alleviate pressure on St. Albert Trail and will support the development of the new community amenities facility and improve Care Creek as a recreation corridor. Financially, it is important for the city to balance infrastructure investment with overall growth needs to mitigate financial risks. Changes to development timelines or expansions could increase tax implications. We'll now pass the presentation on to Anne to discuss strategic parameter number two. Thank you, Christina. In the following slides, we will discuss some of the further financial impacts for council consideration of investing in northeast. These include the impacts of funding through debt, the pressure on future projects competing for borrowing limits and reduced borrowing capacity, which impacts future projects being postponed or canceled. Increased cost of future budgets associated with maintaining and replacing the asset and the risk of investing in multiple areas at the same time. I will now pass it on to Donnie to take us through a map that shows us what projects might get triggered in the future NEST approval.
Thank you, Anne. Please read this map as conceptual at best and subject to amendments. I would emphasize that showing this map is not an indication of what might be front-ended by the city or not. So it is just a conceptual indication, i.e. line on a map in terms of what is coming down the pipe for the northeast quadrant of the city and shows only major projects with most listed in the current offset levy by law. With the advancement of northeast servicing, development of the northeast quadrant of the city would be triggered in non-alignment with the approved MDP as discussed earlier. This could also insert undue additional pressure for more infrastructure investment in the northeast quadrant in the order of two hundred and thirty-two million in the next sixteen years, to which a twenty-five-year horizon is shown on the map. So for example, investing in northeast will spur development in the northeast, which may trigger other projects' investments such as North St. Albert Trail, phase three and four improvements, or four and five improvements, sorry, and potentially a portion of one twenty-seventh street investment, which is yet to be analyzed. Other considerations include storm drainage capacity for follow-away is dependent on nest storm project system unless temporary options are sought. On the flip side, if northeast servicing does not progress and if it eventually stops development to the north, then it may be worth revisiting the decision made to progress with bylaw four before it proceeds to construction with a potential temporary servicing option. I can't emphasize enough that not all projects can be front-ended by the city and there are additional slides that covers the parameters under which the city may consider front-ending, which I would cover after our finance team talks about the debt and its implication. I will now pass on to Anne to take us to the debt-related graphs.
Thank you, Donnie. So this slide depicts a comparison of the outstanding outstanding debt versus debt limits with the timely timelines from the two thousand twenty-four ten-year capital plan with the addition of northeast servicing in Lakeview Business District. The top purple line is the MGA debt limit and the orange line is the internal debt limit. As you can see, both the MGA and the internal debt limits are exceeded from two thousand twenty-nine to two thousand thirty-three, meaning that the city would be unable to fund all projects within the timelines presented in the two thousand twenty-four capital plan. To enable the funding of northeast and Lakeview while staying in compliance with MGA regulations and internal policy, the timelines of some projects would have to be adjusted. It's important to understand that to stay within our debt limits, projects had to be deferred. Next slide. So updating the timelines on some of the municipal capital projects enables the city to stay within these debt limits and potentially fund all projects in the plan. The handout in front of you includes a list of projects included in this graph with the associated dollar amount and star here. So three of the projects that were deferred to future years were community amenities, Range Road two sixty, road construction and police building. Community amenities was deferred nine years, Range Road two sixty was deferred eight years and the police building two years. So to provide some context to the impact on the remaining debt limit available with funding these projects, in the chart you'll see two thousand twenty-six would brings us to around two hundred and forty-two million in outstanding debt. This is compared to our internal debt limit of three hundred and eighteen million, which would leave approximately seventy-six million in available debt limit capacity. So this will put additional pressure on the number of projects competing for funding within the reduced borrowing limits, resulting in projects in the current plan needing to be further postponed or canceled. For example, even one of the projects that Donnie was referring to that would be triggered by northeast servicing would use most, if not all, of the available capacity remaining under the debt limits. So it's important to understand that the current listing of projects that you're seeing in front of you is not an exhaustive list of capital projects and will increase as long-term plans mature. So while the chart shows one scenario, council priorities, costs and timing can change all over time, presenting a different picture as we move through the years. The next chart here shows our debt, new debt servicing limits approved approved in the revised debt policy. And this demonstrates that the city is able to finance all the debt related to the projects in the preceding slides with those new timeframes.
This includes northeast and.
That's with northeast and. With the with the projects postponed that we had discussed. So the financial, next slide. So on the financial considerations, to sum up some of the financial considerations of the city front-ending northeast servicing through debt seen through off-site levy are the pros. To move on to the next slide. The pros, if the decision is made to fund this project, there is capacity within the city's current debt borrowing and debt servicing limits. And as the majority of the project is off-site leavable, the servicing is funded from the off-site levy recovering fund, and thus has minimal tax impacts. The risks and cons are that the risk of investing in two outward growth areas within the city at the same time could negatively impact the pace of development and thus the rate of return. So if the growth realized does not match the investment, there's a risk that the off-site levy collected would be insufficient to cover the debt servicing and thus would be needed to be funded through taxes. There is indication based on what Christina was mentioning that this is a higher probability of occurring due to this proposed NEST investment exceeding that needed projected population employment growth. Other additional costs and projects that just should be taken into consideration is with the advancement of NEST, this triggers those other significant projects that may require funding sooner, further impacting potentially deferment or postponement of other projects on the plan. And also as any capital investment for new infrastructure and growth areas that requires ongoing operating costs such as snow clearing, emergency service support and future asset replacement to support the infrastructure and service levels so that impacts future budgets and tax requirements. In addition, as Christina was mentioning, advancing the NEST projects would should coincide with amendments to the municipal development plan and the development of northeast St. Albert area structure plan. So as the lands west of St. Albert Trail have not been studied or included within the SP, a significant update to the previous work is needed. It is anticipated that updates at a high level estimated cost would be around eight hundred thousand to update that. And one last consideration is that our advocacy efforts with other orders of government have largely focused on infrastructure investments in west St. Albert. We have not explored or discussed intergovernmental partnerships in the northeast. I will now pass on to Donnie to talk about the OSL prioritization matrix and how it supports decision-making to evaluate and prioritize projects into the ten-year capital plan.
Thank you, Anne. The city has a policy to assist in determining which offset levy projects the city may consider front-ending. Council policy C P E O nine was established to provide a set of principles that will be used prioritize and assess which new offset levy set, which new offset levy municipal infrastructure may be eligible for city front-ending, support sustainable growth and development of undeveloped lands within the city. Key elements of the prioritization process are to provide a staged review for all offset levy projects being considered for front-ending by the city, manage risks and create a financial plan and identify funding sources for these projects. The offset levy prioritization matrix is relatively new and is considered still to be in a developmental stage. Some limitations have been identified in the current metrics and the prioritization committee is looking to adjust or add some categories and weightings. Excluding investment to the west of Reg given drive, the latest iteration of the current offset levy matrix was based on twenty twenty-four council priorities and project costs. Among the top five ranked utilities projects using the matrix contain the three projects, storm five, sanitary two and water ten that is part of the NEST project as shown in the table. It's important to note that matrix is forward-facing and only considers projects that have not been built. It does not factor any waiting for projects that have already been up-fronted by the city or areas where the city has already invested. There are many facets that the city will evaluate before an offset levy project gets added to the ten-year capital plan. Project rankings are only one contributing element to this decision. So these projects are evaluated against other projects as well to balance priorities and show funding availability and optimize investment timing. This takes us to the parameter three, other sources of funding. To date, no grand opportunities have been identified to assist in offsetting the project cost. Recent in the governmental advocacy, as Anne mentioned, efforts have focused on Reg given drive corridor and downtown St. Albert. Multiple basins and surveys have not been contemplated. Discussions has occurred with the benefiting developers in the area for possible significant contribution to front-ending the project cost without identifying it as a prepayment of their relieves. To date, there has been no confirmation of this possibility. It is worth noting that borrowing costs are typically lower for the city than they are for private developers. So borrowing costs for larger projects, even when recovered through offset levies, can have an impact on affordability. Private developers may also have challenges obtaining funds through debt for large offset levy projects. As of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, a total of three point six million, which is approximately six percent, has been collected towards the offset levy portion of the NEST project from the benefiting lands. If NEST proceeds, it enables potential future collection towards this project if growth matches investment. As discussed, as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, a total of three point six million, which is approximately six percent of the total NEST project estimate, having collected towards the offset levy portion of the project from the benefiting lands. The contribution allocation by category is also shown on the slide for sanitary. It's about seven percent, storm four percent and water ten percent. This is talking about the parameter four, a hold on northeast development. This, in terms of how to handle development applications with the known risk of sanitary capacity constraint today under two major scenarios, one if northeast does not proceed or delay following the growth direction set by MDP, and the second, if northeast does proceed in Q four twenty twenty-four, following northeast ASP first reading, whether it gets majority voting or not. For context, due to sanitary servicing capacity constraints, an administrative hold on general development has been issued in late twenty twenty-two for the northern part of the city, except for limited acceptance of case-by-case applications as restraining capacity permitted. Currently, administration has exhausted almost all possible case-by-case servicing applicability within the approved engineering science standards without having to adversely affect the existing sanitary operations within the city's northeast quadrant. A council-approved hold on development would help stop the drain on staff capacity. If northeast does not proceed or delay following the growth direction set by MDP, city would require introducing a council-approved permanent hold on any new application acceptance of new development in the catchment area of NEST project, until this permanent infrastructure funding is approved and construction agreement signed. Without this hold, a necessary drain on city staff resources occurring, having to review and provide responses to all new applications for development, which are likely to receive a non-approval without building the initial capacity through NEST or through an interim servicing investment by developers, which could gain a short-term capacity of three to five years. Regarding the entering capacity, additional discussions are ongoing with the significant developers in the area to possibly build additional storage capacity for both sanitary and storm servicing by having them invest in their own combined sanitary storm lift stations that could likely gain approximately three to five years of interim capacity for storage and slow release with the already constrained existing collection system. Or some limited development to proceed until the ultimate N S is still built. Now, if northeast does proceed with or without approval of the A S B, administration would still benefit from a council approved temporary hold on any new application acceptance of new development in the catchment area if northeast until the northeast is procured, completed and construction contract awarded site. In this scenario, developers are required to invest in the lift station mentioned earlier in two A S B areas for efficient conveyance of sanitary and storm, even with the build out of the northeast. As noted, developers' investment in the combined extension infrastructure will not be a lost cost in both scenarios, but they will be forced to make a decision on the interim based on their R O I payback years based on their products and market conditions. Should council wish to discuss further any of these matter in in conference, a motion could be adopted to consider an in camera discussion. You might recognize this information from council's density and sustainability workshop earlier this year. So these are important considerations to assist when investment decisions are required. Reminder that today's decision impact featured decisions, what is the best timing? And we need to understand the true impact of the asks and decisions and look at it from a broader lens. For each opportunity and decision, we must ask some tough questions. Does it align with our plans? Is it financially sustainable in the short and long term? Does it balance the need for all neighborhoods? So in conclusion, administration is presenting this report as information only and ask that council or committee consider all the strategic parameters presented here prior to making investment decision towards northeast construction phase in November twenty twenty four. That that concludes the presentation and thank you for the opportunity to present this update. The project team, cross functional team, and as will be had to answer any questions. Thank you.
A good story from the three of you. Hey, let's open up to questions. Who wants to go first?
I'm going first.
Go ahead.
Uh, I just wrote the presentation and thank you very much for the presentation. So there there was something in the background or as well as you referred to it when you were providing the presentation around the non alignment with the M D P and the fact that when all of this was being, when the M D P was in development, none of this was kind of identified, the northeast or if it was identified, um, it wasn't really considered. Considering that we've been knowing the implications of this for about ten years or there's been something on the horizon for about ten years, how did that happen? Or is that, I mean, I realize that's not a criticism, I'm just, I'm just wondering how that happened.
Yeah, so when we were developing flourish, there were areas that we looked at for growing first was then into the northeast. Um, we looked at a full intensification strategy. That was another uh, one we looked at and when we looked at growing west. And we, based upon all the input that we received uh, from council, from the public land development community, um, and specifically one of the big key inputs was the community many site decision, um, and our desire to grow our non residential um, tax base. The decision was to focus greenfield to the west. Also, remember at the time of developing flourish, the annexation had not occurred. So a lot of the servicing area that N S provides is actually outside of the city. So that is also part of it is to prioritize where we could actually expand and get the most amount of land within our city boundaries. Um, and that's why west was chosen.
I I just is maybe a comment then because I mean, obviously after the M D P or I mean, after the annexation and you focused in relation to the kind of the principles identified in the M D P around that seventy thirty. But yet we were seeing a lot of that growth to the north already occurring. I mean, and I guess it was, I guess that little piece that we were going to annex up to five forty four. I'm I'm, I just, I'm just saying, most of the growth was moving north and it was, it does tie in with the principle of around Saint Albert Trail, correct? Or.
It does, but we had already like investments had already been made to go west. So I think this is, you know, kind of going back six, eight years ago, councils made, previous councils had made decisions to invest growing west. Um, and to put some of that investment there. So that is where, based upon all of the input and all of the um, previous decisions, it had led us to making that recommendation to go west. Again, also with the new underpinning of it as trying to get as much non residential land as possible onto bringing that um, into the fold. So there were, again, um, the majority, there was, I don't know if we knew fully the extent of how much the exists, the previous boundary could grow to or couldn't grow to. But N S brings on a substantial more than what.
That's the land that we annexed to the.
Yes.
Northwest, right?
Yeah, which includes up to five forty four.
Yeah.
Mike, would you say Christina that the northeast was never deprioritized? I mean, it was still growing and we we would never stop development. It's just when the choices are made on infrastructure investment and we don't have that that millions of dollars we have to make trades.
Exactly it. So it was kind of said, invest this way, visions have already been made to fund the city to invest growing west. Growing north wasn't, I don't, it was maybe deprioritized from a city investment perspective within the M D P. But if the land development industry wanted to come in and put in that investment, it wasn't to say that we would stop that.
Would you sort of interrupt? Because it's kind of the same lines. If this, if we didn't require this utility infrastructure to service the northeast, it would not be a conflict.
Right, right. We would enable it to.
It's the investment part.
Well, I think there's a couple of issues there, right? And so, you know, if this had been approved ten years ago, we wouldn't be here and it wasn't, right? So we kind of are where we are today. From the sense that I I would characterize the northeast servicing discussion as not a matter of if, but a matter of when, right? That's kind of the decision that's that's in front of council. Ultimately, that number two box that was on the one slide, right?
But that's.
So so it's really a matter of sequencing, I think, realistically in light of the overall financial picture of the city. I think the other component is, you know, the M D P alignment, again, separating the two components matters insofar as we've got alignment with the growth plan as well. So I don't want to understate the importance of the M D P alignment to S P's as it relates to R F S and the M R B.
Yes.
Consideration.
Yeah, I I mean, I think that's where I'm, that's sorry, sorry.
Were you done your comment?
No, keep going. Yeah.
No, I I I guess it just falls into. And you were right on where I was going with it and it's and your response was where I was going as well. It's not that we can't do, it's just the implications of if versus when. But also, we had the knowledge prior, but decisions weren't made because we were focusing other areas that are and I'm just trying to get the timeline in my own head is to, I mean, this this shouldn't have come as a surprise to us. I mean, we knew that this was growth, this was a growth area and we knew that this needed servicing. It's just how to.
That's why it's in the M D P, the priority area for growth is west. There's other areas for growth, but they're not priority areas. That is the intent of it. It's saying, okay, in in the future, we will, you know, we've got some investment going on in the northeast. Um, but it's not the priority area for the city to invest in.
And yet, when you look at all of the visible growth, that's where you're seeing it to the north, right?
We're getting quite a lot of, like, there was, um, Shiro is is moving along.
Since then, yeah. No, I I'm looking at, I'm looking at some of the commercial development, some of the other things. Ever like going back to two thousand seven, going back to all of all of that area, we started moving towards, right?
So again, remember the infrastructure investment to cross Reg given drive just occurred twenty twenty twenty. So like, we're talking about, the plan has now been adopted. Um, and there is, I don't know, we can, Mike is here to talk today from economic development.
Yeah.
About the interest in those lands, but yes.
I mean, I mean, just looking at the timeline, I'm just trying to fixate the timeline in the head in relation to where where things happen and we had so much going on between twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and then all moving into the the new M D P. But what, we moved the M D P planning ahead a little bit in relation to some of the conversations we were having around annexation, didn't we? Or was that, am I, timing was out? Because we weren't really going to look at or revisit revisiting the M D P until about twenty twenty five, wasn't that? Am I, am I out to lunch?
No, you're right. Administration was asking us to do it and it got delayed by council in the thirteen to seventeen term. And then when you got elected seventeen, we pushed it back up.
We pushed it back up, yeah. But then you see so much of that happening in relation to what's going on. I mean, you had you had, you had the growth management management study from twenty twenty, then you had um, some of the M D P discussion and then you had also at the same time the annexation stuff.
So what you do see within the annexation, which I was trying to demonstrate through the slides, is that you see a correlation between the results of the growth management study within the annexation and what you see uh, within flourish. So they're actually saying the same thing. And again, it's it's not about um, that we won't be investing. It's about when.
Yeah, that that, yeah, and that's picking up on Mr. Fletcher's comments. It's, we need to do this. It's just, what do we have to, what?
Yeah, from from an administrative perspective, this is not a value judgment on the expand, right? It's ultimately the alignment from a statutory planning perspective, which is a significant issue for administration because we do it. It doesn't hold generally and then ultimately your decision on how you prioritize the key investments over time to allow it to happen.
I I guess where I was coming from is is that it was, this was always there and it was I I mean, I'm just starting to think of it. It was kind of outside of, I mean, we we always knew we had to grow to this area if this was going to continue to grow. And I don't know how, I don't think one area, and this is my words and that's not, that's not your, I don't think we should penalize one. There's one sort of grandfathered in somehow because a lot of the discussion happens for the west because of the M D P, but we have this area that needs the, so I mean, it's is grandfathering the right term.
Existing.
Existing.
Restriction parts, but new ones are different, right?
Okay, that's one, that's kind of where I'm, that's kind of where I am, anyway.
I'm going to go to west right away, but can you just bring up the benefiting area slide? That's probably the one that we should have on the screen, maybe. It's way back, I think. That one now, yeah.
This is the sanitary one.
There's sanitary and you have three different slides on this? But what for each sanitary, water and storm?
Uh, water, we cannot really have show a catchment area person because it goes everywhere. So we have catchment area for sanitary on this side. The next slide shows the storm.
Okay.
Slightly different.
Yeah, slightly. But I'm, what it might just was going to say is there's a lot of benefiting areas to the west, right? So interesting. At northeast.
Just St. Albert Trail, all of those yellow hatch area. We don't have an A N A S B, but that that'll get triggered.
Oh, I think, isn't Jensen Lakes in there?
Jensen Lakes is all that red hatch area.
So the northeast servicing, as you can see, goes beyond, and this goes to some of the questions you're asking, Council. Is that you're seeing part of the reason why, when you're developing flourish and it was pre-annexation, you know, within that blue line, that's as far as we could go. So you weren't, we weren't getting that much bang for our buck with the servicing investment from a very land based perspective, right? Growing west and then again, because decisions had been made already to invest in the infrastructure to go west, might as well continue on with that.
Yeah, interesting. Uh, I I read the report with with interest. Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, the world has changed dramatically since then. Last year, record growth into Alberta. And how do we reconcile stopping? Because that's temporary hold. But what you really mean is that we're putting moratorium on growth in the north until the servicing comes in. So if we don't do this, that's what happened, right? And and then we go to the west. I just don't know how we do that in an environment where growth into the province is exceeding projections. And uh, other orders of government are coming to the table with money to help build necessary infrastructure. And and we're not being bold to to bring on this this land. I I, I think we need to do the west for sure. But I don't know how you kill this. And and uh, so I think the challenge before us here is is to find some way to to manage our debt, our growth, our build, because we only, we only borrow money when we need it, even though the borrowing violence there. And then stage it so that we can manage it. I mean, that's, that's why we get the big bucks to do this. And 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 quite honestly, these are the hard decisions that council have to come up against. Is how do you do that? And and from my personal perspective, I I just think we we just need to be bold in a time when when Alberta is growing, we have an opportunity to quotes flourish. And I, I just see that a moratorium is like shooting ourselves in the foot. And then we're just going to stop to reload. It's.
Sorry, I was like, should we put the slide that says questions on?
My slide is, the courage was made before we've got, before we had the extra land.
Yeah.
And uh, and so the benefiting lands now are within Saint Albert, right? So it's, it's not as if we're investing in land that isn't part of the city, so.
I blame the annexation committee.
You know, I, if you want to blame something, blame COVID. Blame blame the wars in in the Ukraine and in the Middle East. The world has changed. I just think we, I don't know. I'm struggling with it.
Again, if I if I could just offer, you know, the historical outlay or the sort of how we got here, I guess, at the end of the day, it's useful to frame it. What you're getting from us is the world the way it is right now, uh, right? And so the calculus said, and so council could decide whatever you want. We will enable it. We just want it to be a conformed decision based on all the factors that's ultimately like, so this isn't a value proposition and so yes, council, right? If you decide that's the way you're going, enable it and get there. But under the current construct, what what you see is where we are.
I appreciate the hard work that went into this and I don't want to minimize that in any extent. I I really don't. It's just as as a leader of our community, I how how do we cast vision for the future? By saying we're going to do so. I, I'd rather find a way to yes.
There's the question.
That's just mine. I'm one vote.
No, it's good. Um, I don't know. I, okay, Mike and then Sheena and then just keep that slide up.
Uh, I was actually going to ask for slide thirteen.
Slide thirteen?
The the question around slide thirteen is that that's still, that slides shows our investment areas and our key growth to the west, but it also includes a large portion of uh, the land north of Vilnew in that little pocket, which is uh, Jensen Lakes, right? Which, so I, my my question was not only the Jensen Lake section, but all the kind of that north. How how are we going to service that in just business as usual, I'll call it that, business as usual mode without, because it doesn't say, hey, we have to, you know, do a big project. It's still included in within the original version of flourish.
So just for a little bit of clarification, it's hard to see on the old on the old map because this is the old boundary. Um, there are two different colors with the west um, and the northeast, so it's still, the west still says the prioritization area. It's it's an outline color. It's hard to tell. And then the North is areas for growth. Um, so what? Green? No, so it's, that's the new version with the annexation lands in it. This is the original Flourish map. So it's, it's still saying the same thing. We just changed the colors to make it a little bit easier in, to understand in the uh twenty twenty-two version, but it's saying the West is to prioritize. Um, as to how it was gonna be serviced, again, um, I think that's, you have to look at your M D P first, and then you've got your area structure plan. So there is, there are statements within the existing A S Ps that were approved. So in the Jensen Lakes, it talks about the servicing. But there doesn't, it doesn't talk about capacity, and I think that's where we're, we know how it all fit together. It's just now realizing that the capacity has been taken. And that's when the investment, and that's when the challenge comes forward. Anything else to add to that topic?
Exactly, the existing capacity has been taken up by whatever development has occurred in those approved A S B areas. And now we have, we are accustomed to having to have this infrastructure investment before we allow any more development to proceed.
Okay, um, and could you just uh hand recap the projects who would have to be deferred, I think you said, uh amenity site by ten years?
Uh, that one, let's go back. I think that one is, that's why nine years?
To, to, to get within the, the borrowing.
Yeah, so uh, community manages nine years, Range Road two sixty with deferred eight, and please building two years.
So those are based on all-in costs, right? And so, end of the day, and that's based on the prioritization kind of as it's looked at today, as Anne mentioned. I could shift flow, you could sequence things. There's ways to kind of work a little bit within that, but broadly speaking, those are the major implications. Based on today, right? Council ultimately decide what the part of zone.
And the third big assumption that, not, not assumption, impact that we're talking about is if we continue to look at the land in the West, um, Lakeview Business District and servicing. That's where we get the biggest uh positive impact to our strategic view of, of getting a seventy thirty tax assessment. Uh, as a, and versus if we look at the land truly on the north uh east side, that's a, was a fifty uh, still stays roughly fifty, fifty rez versus?
I think it's, for a non-res, it's identified as eighteen percent of the landmass, and then forty percent for residential.
We haven't seen that, really.
That's, that's, you'll see that with the A S P.
Right, that's, that was a question I had. So there is, there is a portion of that new area structure plan that has employment.
Yes, eighteen, about eighteen percent is employment lands.
And the financial analysis on Lakeview is coming in to really, as that first step to get us between towards that seventy thirty split. We'll be discussing that more next week.
F I A for Lakeview is still negative one point eight, so that means a one point eight or to the West, it, it's a one point eight tax increase, is that?
So that was for the whole annexation lands, to bring on the whole annexation lands. Um, the F I A looked at what the implication of having all of those lands brought on based upon um this, if you can go to the next. Again, it's messy, it's very messy, but that slide in that map right there. That slide right there shows kind of when we would expect the lands to come on in staging. And that, everything coming on based upon those timelines would result in a one point eight percent at the time, what they knew from all the uh approved council projects in the ten-year capital plan, that it would remain at one point eight percent. So bringing on things in advance without taking things off would increase that cost. Now, I don't know, I can't say if you add this, it'll increase it to two percent, oh, that's still good. You know, I can't, I can't state that. I don't know that, but based upon the F I A that was done for the whole annexation lands onto the impact.
Based on, just to follow up on what Christina was saying, because it's based on that concept that you're timing out your investment to get that growth increase, then to offset those costs. So that's where Christine is alluding to, you're using that increased growth revenue to offset the operating impacts, the service level requirements, and infrastructure replacements. So that would be then, you're gonna get more of an impact if you align them and invest at the same time, because you're not offsetting that increase in growth.
And then, again, just, it highlights here as well that within the boundary that we saw for the original Flourish, that at a one point six percent growth rate, which is, I think we hit one point eight percent last year, um, which was much higher than normal. The question, we still had that amount of uh landmass dedicated for uh development, which accommodates about thirty thousand people. So it's, you know, we might shorten these timelines if we ended up with a one point eight percent or a two percent growth rate over time. Um, but it, it's still, it still demonstrates that there's available capacity for right now.
You know, you're up, sure. Um, just to continue on that, though, let's just hypothetically say we didn't approve this, and this was basically behold for years. We would probably wouldn't hit one point six percent if we only allowed the West to grow. Like, I don't see how if we just went focused on West and Northeast was then frozen, that we'd actually achieve our population or density or any of those growth targets that were expected.
So we would hit our density target.
Yes, I guess that's it, but the growth.
Um, the growth target, I, like, I guess I, I can't say yes, certainly, that's a bit about long-term economics as well. Um, but Riverside has significant capacity for growth. Charo is still moving along. Um, this will not impact um the Nouveau lands and South Real with the Averton product, along with any kind of internal the Butro, um, the niche property, um, all of the internal stuff as well would allow for growth.
Of years, what percentage of that one point six is coming from the northeast?
That would be hard to.
Do we have nine years? I don't know. Um, I can take that back as a question.
Great, yeah. Um, the other question I had was, okay, so let's just assume now on the opposite, that this was approved in November, moving forward. Um, I feel like for the developers right now, they're at like a full stop at this point, one or another. When would that stop then be relieved? If we said yes in November, when would they be able to start putting things back in for first? Because the
Is it twenty second?
But is it, they cannot actually put anything in till twenty twenty seven?
What we are suggesting is, once the, let's say, any S projects get approved, funded, we'll wait to take the application and then the contract is signed with the contractor, because that gives us comfort level that we are, we can execute this project within the approved budget. Which is about six months from
Servicing might help that gap, right?
Yeah, and servicing might help, but that's also going to take for them to build the lift station probably a year and a half. So what we are suggesting is, we don't have to wait until the asset is built. They can start with the application after we sign the contract with the contractor, which is about six months, roughly about six months from the approval stage. So, so we can start getting the application, they can start, because that's a two years timeframe before the actual build out happens, right? So hopefully by then, we will complete the asset on the side in power. That's the idea, but um, it's, the temporary hold will likely go for six months or so.
So right, as of now, until basically March, April, it's gonna be a hold for any development? Second and, and third reading aren't till January, right?
First reading, if, if we proceed as planned, the second and third reading of the borrowing bylaws is supposed to be of January.
Yeah, I think it's separate, this is the A S P is a different.
Yes.
Strictly.
And then, you're saying that we wouldn't have it signing a contract for six months after January?
Yeah, because once the borrowing bylaws approved, only I can award the contract. We will try to put this in the market in power, but without closing it, without the approval. But once the tender is closed, evaluation happens by the time you sign the contract, he will take, it'll be like Q two.
We were to shorten, I know we have enough policy right now to do the sixty days for the boring by law, but we also have the option to reduce it if we think it's necessary. Um, if we were to reduce it, would it be, it would be like early December, or just by December, the, the second day of December, even if we get to? Would that make any difference, any material difference to be able to get this, that we're going into Christmas, right? It's like everything goes into shutdown mode. Um, would it actually make a difference, do you think?
Or maybe by a month or so, not mu- not much, because we still have to turn the rate of right five days in the market, things like that.
Well, when we comes back on the meeting in November, could you just look into that, what, what the difference would be? Because if it's necessary, if it will be to our advantage, I think it's something we should be considering as a council that, that, that meeting. Um, to see about that. The other thing, you mentioned something about there could be delayed with the cost recovery agreement. I'm just trying to figure out what you meant by that. What is, what is cost recovery agreement?
Okay, so that is, I'm talking about the non-offside levy.
Fibers in the water.
Um, so if I can pull up a map here quickly. So if you look at the left side map, um, so you have the three twenty-five meters of water lines shown in blue, and also a stub, sanitary stub to the lift station, sanitary lift station. So this line, you don't have to necessarily build it, but it's nice to have it built at the same time when we dig this road, which would benefit the land um next door, uh next to the core mine road. Just all across land, so they will benefit from that line and the stuff. So X years from now, whenever they are ready to develop, they have the water line ready to go and connection to the sanitary system.
That would be a condition they would have paid.
That'll be, this is a separate cost recovery agreement that we have to enter into with the developer ahead of time, but with, obviously, we cannot sign that agreement without having council approval to fund that through the debt.
Um, also, yeah, so with the fiber optic is completely
Optic is completely municipal cost.
Right, so I wrote down, because you have in the background, or minimal, but a minimal in a seventy million dollar project is still, do we have any idea what those numbers are? Is it seven hundred thousand?
It's faded, uh, for fiber optic, it's about one point four million.
One point four, and so we don't have to do it?
Well, it's, you know, if you're digging that.
Sure, I know, I'm just saying.
From being dug up from the lab.
Just turned it like yours.
I just want to emphasize, we are only installing the conduit, not the fiber pool. Fiber pool will be a separate project charter that will come in the future.
And the um, sanitary stuff, how much is that?
Overall, the non-offside levy, uh, the developer benefiting contributes about one, just over a million together.
Oh, together, okay. So keep going. So you mentioned with that fifty percent in the lift station, so forgive me if I it's somewhere in there, so how, how much is the lift station coming in at right now?
Sorry. About five, six, nine.
Plus or minus two is kind of where we're at? And when will we have, will we have those numbers more solid for November or the November? That's the expectation.
But we are still um at the final stage of negotiating the U V T right-of-way agreement for the lift station, where the lift station is supposed to go. That is a critical element before finalizing the design.
Is it gonna be there before we do the project charter and the boring bylaw?
That's the
No pressure. So the other thing, um, also, uh, council brother, I agree with you. I don't really know how you can say no at this point. It's just expectations of when you prove A S P direction and let them build it. But the other question I have is going forward, because you're showing a book with debt, and we also have additional offset levy projects that are have been approved and come on the radar, sometimes spontaneous to the project number nine. So when I'm looking at what we're doing right now, which is that the city has to build it, and then we are then charging, which basically really puts a lot of onus on the city to front-end these type of items, because the offset levy program is paying it, but it looks like after the fact, not before the fact, when you sign the only six percent that now has been done, we're towards this cost. And I'm assuming that of that six percent, just before I start all this, we, the three point six million, you said that was cost recovery. Did we already apply two million towards it, when we have one point six left?
So you're talking about the portions that they have collected?
Or is it we had three point six towards the total debt?
Towards the total debt, the recovered portion will go towards the debt. And we cannot mix the bucket too, so the sanitary has to fund the sanitary and storm has to fund the storm.
Just wondering, we approved two million dollars to do this, the buying? Is that out of the three point six million?
Yeah, it's a combination of all three.
One point six million now to go towards this purchase left?
And speak about the remaining funding available?
But approximately, like, I'm just like, we've already used up two of the three point.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll have to look at, um, before we bring the project charter, the capacity of the recovery fund to fund, um, if Lakeview goes forward, and then Northeast is the capacity to make sure we have the level of payments to support that three years of payments, so we'll communicate that as part of that.
Yeah, that's very helpful, because I definitely, when this comes up on November third, just to actually see what this is and what, I know we have a fund to handle potential issues, um, but we have a lot potentially drawing from that fund now, so if we have some bad years or something, then it could really go down quite quickly, so um, just that whole risk analysis of what we did for, for both this and Lakeview will be super helpful. Communicate that as part of that.
I, I would just have the water component, we have enough on some better recovery to fund it. It's the sanitary and storm that is.
So the other thing, I guess I would spend back to is that if you're going forward, if we're still expecting the city to pave and develop these projects, we're gonna have a serious problem with debt past what we're looking at with just or what we're looking at. Um, Edmonton has it where developers can actually develop it and build it, and then use it towards credit, which then goes on their debt payments, not ours. So I'm just suggesting that this may be something we have to look at, is that we've gotten to the point with just the growth level of the city and demand for infrastructure, that maybe the city can't be the one that's actually developing everything, because it comes on our credit card. And if we were to let someone else build it, then it would go on their credit card. And it would actually allow us to have not necessarily these issues coming forward um of discussing our debt limits, because I don't know how we can actually, I remember this was like eight years ago, and they talked about, we had a hundred and thirty million dollars worth of projects, and back then, it was, I think it was optimistic, a hundred and thirty million at that time, for the next ten years. And that was not including anything else we have, and of course, now it's just more things come up and prices increase. So I'm not sure if our current offsite levy plan of having the city have to build it and then also have to pay for it um, or find the payments for it at the time of, is actually gonna be a long-term feasible solution. So just bringing that up for discussion, because that's just, I don't know what we're gonna do with the next one, because two of us still debt limit, and we're getting pretty high.
That is something that we're gonna be coming to council to discuss as part of the debt strategy, is that I know other municipalities have been looking at, you know, what percentage of projects should the city be fronting, so we'll look at that as part of our debt strategy project, come back with a
And that is trending, it's gonna actually build it, like, if we say that the, the developers saying, I will build this because it's delivered to us, and that isn't their credit card, as opposed to saying, we're not gonna do it unless you give us money, and not give them the time to also plan to fix that, it's a process, so um, that, that may be something we need to look at, because right now, we're just handling this crisis. But if we had a different type of offset levy plan for how we're enacting it, we wouldn't be in this crisis. And I don't know if it's still less, I think it's the policy that we
Yeah, so whatever it is.
You've started by prioritizing projects that you've seen, if you've started.
That policy, but it's a matrix that they're playing around with, it's not.
So I think that matrix needs to be firm. I don't know if that needs to get council approval, because we do other capital, anyway, and then
Bring to council at some point when we felt comfortable using it fully as well.
And I think what we need in the future is a policy on what we
This is alluding to the percentage contribution.
Are on point, but obviously, it's, it's wide range in other municipalities, it's the market.
Yeah, for sure, I just, it's, we're, we're in a void, because we have nothing to stand on, we have no policy. I'm gonna call a break, because it's almost eleven. I've got Shelley then Wes, but let's just take ten minutes, um, because it's been an hour and a half since, is Natalie with us yet?
Okay, um, five to eleven, let's be back here at ten after eleven.
Thank you, I, I wasn't around for the annexation of the lands, and so if you could clarify something for me, in the Northeast has, have costs seem to have escalated quite a bit there for the servicing, because it seems like we've been mentioned, you know, a lot of excess water, a lot of issues in that area that had to be taken care of. Was there a projected cost prior to, you know, costs?
Yeah, there would have been through the annexation document, I don't have it broken out per servicing area, it was just a whole amount for the whole annexation area. Um, the cost will have escalated, um the FIA would have been done, I think it was done in about twenty twenty, so costs have escalated from then. But it would have given a, a rough estimate that would have been in this general state ballpark.
Yeah, so costs haven't es- escalated because of the things we've come across that weren't anticipated, it's just in the increase in servicing and such is the reason?
So it was all assumed, the cost, the annexation and the FIA, to make sure that from the provincial level, we had to stay within a certain amount of risk when it came to financial impact on the city, for the annexation to determine that the annexation would be fiscally viable for the city. And so by doing that, they anal- they analyzed kind of when all these projects would come on based upon our growth rate. And based upon that, they found out that, you know, it would vary, some years you'd have a two point five percent tax increase, some years you'd have a point five percent tax increase, but over the lifespan of the thirty-five years, it worked up to one point eight percent to bring on these labs. Um some of this is quite complicated, and I don't even fully have my whole head wrapped around it, but the offsites um aren't taxable, they're not a, you know, that is paid back. Um, so this is just tax implications, there are a lot of operating costs as well that you have to um expect to have to fund by bringing on two servicing areas at the same time. Um, we're now gonna have parks being developed uh in the west and in the northeast um at the same time, so there will be needs for that, there will be you might need some more engineers to help uh facilitate some of the applications, that type of thing, so um the, the, the estimates that we're talking about are, are very much capital offsite costs. They're not operational costs, is that correct?
Yeah, and it's important to keep in mind, that's in addition to the tax increases required to maintain service levels, existing service levels.
So my question, thank you.
Wes?
Uh, thanks, um, two questions, uh first on, on your slide there uh with the um northeast servicing uh I, where the water lines is, there's a, uh, and a table attached to it. Uh, it has number four in red, and it said twenty sixteen projects started, uh but developer needs to construct this portion, I didn't quite understand that note.
Which slide are you referencing to?
It's um the one with the water, the blue lines, it was, I think it's the water one.
And the big table beside it?
Yeah, and the, and the table underneath it, yeah.
Oh, the big one uh with the. And the.
Right at the end there.
Okay, got you, got you. This slide.
Uh, yeah. So the, the block in red there, number four. If you go over there, it says twenty sixteen projects started.
Yeah. So this is a developer contributed asset, the northeast lift station. Um, so in the offset levy model, it was slated as supposed to have started in twenty sixteen, but it's still not built.
So it's not half constructed, sitting there empty?
Sitting there, yeah, which is one of the interim solutions that suggested, build that along with the sanitary. So that could give us about three to five years of buildable, developable space.
Yeah, well, that was my follow-up question, was around the interim capacity, but that's dependent on this getting built?
Yes. And also, there's another one there, um number two. It's northeast lift station, so um that number two and number four can be combined lift station, which is one of the interim solutions to the east. And in, and in parallel to that, number three also can be built, this is also a private build. Um, so those three elements can proceed as an interim solution.
And if I read correctly, if that was built, it's not sunk cost, right?
It's not sunk cost. It'll probably give us about three to five years, because what we are doing is our existing capacity is maxed out. So we are building storage in this lift station to hold it when it rains and, and release it to the existing system when it stops raining. So that, that's the mechanism behind it.
Oh, the borrowing by law comes, you sign contracts, this has to be built anyway to give you that interim capacity until everything's built?
It's a decision the developer has to make, because it's not cheap either. Um, how much, because when they look at it, return on their investment, they have to look at, how much of land can I get out of this investment? And that's a balancing act that they will have to make.
It's an easier decision if, if the whole servicing plan is actually funded, right? Gotcha. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, just to follow up, and you keep it on slide eighteen there, because one of the comments that was identified around potential impacts of a decision to fund this was kind of, will that spur other things that aren't on our, our, well, or further out, like St. Albert Trail expansion, further St. Albert Trail expansion and one twenty-seventh, so what, what, what is the trigger on those in the sense of I, I say Albert Trail, I can imagine, and you can look at eight, nine, and ten, I think on there, or I have to turn around. This freaks me out, by the way.
Uh, it's, uh, so I mean, you've got uh some of those I've possibly identified, which are significant, living in a park in relation to that. Living in a problem in relation to that.
And then, I mean, that.
And then you've got one twenty seventh street. So this queue in, what would, how does that queue in? Like, what would be the decision point on?
Would that be a developer-led conversation, or would that be the provincial conversation? How would that happen?
It's yet to be analyzed. We haven't had any conversation other than the functional planning study that was completed. And the figure that you see there is actually coming from the surgeon county's functional plan, and it's prorated now because it's one twenty seventh street is much beyond. We only accounted for those that is happening within our boundary to come up with a prorated cost.
Right.
That's a bigger conversation.
I mean, if you look at eight and nine uh, on that chart, and for that, that's phase four and phase five. No, you're looking at almost forty million dollars, forty some odd million dollars. So.
That's what we have in the current um, offset levy model.
Yeah.
And that cost will change as soon as we move into concept and additional studies happen around.
I think it's loosely based to the pace of buildout as well, right? And so at the end of the day, your transportation infrastructure has to be sufficient, very stated, the obvious, right? But to match the volume. Uh, and so the pace of buildout, I think, will drive in part some of those discussions. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, on that, right, on, on when these things become necessary. And obviously, you want to have them in place before it becomes critical, before they're necessary, um, sequencing.
Yeah, I mean, and then the other line that you have in there is if you don't, then we don't need fire hall four. But at the same way, the way the growth is occurring for the way, I mean, uh, you would have to look at your modeling in relation to your response times around that as well, right?
And as it stand, as it stands now, uh, without any significant further development, we can delay fire hall four based on our response times.
Fire hall four services.
The side of the road though, right?
Yeah, but more of the, the north and the northeast. I can't remember, is it fire hall three services, that's the west. So that's where like your response times will be okay in the west because you've already got that investment there. If you continue to grow in the north, you're gonna need to have another fire station.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, you know me, unintended consequences, right? And if you, all of a sudden, if you build it, I mean, you might as well be building out St. Albert Trail right now, otherwise we'll be, we're, you know, you're, you're just jumping a little bit at a time. Anyway, okay.
Do you have another question?
Nope. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I thought I had some presentation.
An estimate um, of how much we've already spent to service uh, northwest and get the services in for Shero and the potential, you know, school site that we have close to shovel ready there. And servicing for our, our amenities site.
We have, wait for one more week, that's part of the presentation next Tuesday. But uh, high level, on a high level, we have invested in project nine, that's bringing the sanitary across. And twenty twenty, as part of the community amenities advance, when we invest in project eight and the community amenities servicing, it's about twenty five million. Project nine was about twenty two, I think, somewhere there.
Originally it was forty.
And we brought it down. So those are the bigger investment, Ray Given Drive, that's an investment in partner with problems. Uh, we are sitting at about thirty one million on that with the additional funding that went into all four phases. Uh, those are the major ones. And then we have invested in the west ASP. Now investing in neighborhood plan, also studies, it's still money that's spent towards that.
And, and Ray Given Drive shortfall, it says eight million. It, was that not agreed to be fifty fifty split?
Yes.
Province? So is it eight million or four million that?
It's four million each.
Okay.
So it was sixteen.
Province is an additional eight million dollars.
So what was an extra eight, was it plus as well? Sixteen total, extra.
Ten eight, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
So um, just one more thing. So we've, we've got, we've got several things on the floor, I see. We have the fact we're maximum on our debt level. Um, we also just have the fact this debt period, so this have, um, some of the projects we've done have, we've had like um, I'm just called PID or something like this, I guess, there's a P in there, where you try to like um, figure out ways to reduce the cost overall. We found it where we, we went with the, in sort of the developer or the construction that we were able to find ways to find cost savings, because even if we do approve sixty or seventy or whatever the number is, um, if the real costs are less, then both the payments go down and also the offset levels go down. So are we going to be approaching that this way, or do we have any intention of this? Like talking to the developers and saying, hey, do you see any cost savings, or talking to, having incentivized program to find a way to get this to the standard we're looking for, but get it for a reduced cost? Are we, are we trying to do that going forward, or what is the intention there?
Conversation has been happening throughout the design progression. Developers were part of thirty, sixteen, ninety percent advancement in design. And any cost efficiencies that anybody saw within that stakeholder group was discussed and brought uh, forward into the design component that we have seen today. And one big reason for the lift station where it's slated now, the location discussion was purely based on efficiencies down the road. By doing that, we have essentially eliminated having to uh, bring online another lift station when that new development go forward. Just not only capital investment, but operational expenses also for the city, right? By eliminating that, you know, so in short, the efficiency has been part of the design progression. Now, I think you mentioned about the type of methodology of construction, similar to how we have employed on the storage and reservoir project. We looked at, if you can look into that particular model at the initial stages, that has to happen early in the design phase, you know, if you need to have a contractor be brought on board to discuss this through. We looked at the, the scope that is part of this project right now doesn't really entail any more further efficiencies by bringing on that kind of model is what we just.
Couple. One's a small question. The trail, which was mentioned at the very beginning of your uh, presentation. You said that's now offset levy recoverable. You, you said something about directional drilling because of the coal or the soil conditions? Does that mean we're not ripping up field?
Okay, that's right. So without ripping the surface, like underneath.
So all we have to do is add manhole covers along the way?
Yes.
Kind of what you have to put.
Okay. Covers along the way, and which is why our operations team need access to this infrastructure throughout the year, including the storm outfall that goes to the river. That's why it's offset leviable now under that category. Uh, having said that, we are still looking at whether we can avoid that three meter asphalt, can we leave it at gravel? So that's still in the.
That's my, I guess my next question to maybe Bill or you or whoever, um, we have an outstanding council motion to present trail options.
That's what we were planning to do, but now that it's part of the offset levy portion of it, it doesn't require a motion for sale.
Okay, so do we need a motion to rescind that one? It's kind of where I'm going.
Uh, we came back on the decisional, you know, because it's will influence the way ahead on that.
Okay. Getting my ducks in a row. Um, I also, again, on the fifth, where you have motions ready to go for council approval of a temporary and a permanent hold on development, depending on what we decide on the fifth, we have those motions ready. And essentially, you need those motions because it would alleviate you accepting applications and doing the work. Okay. Yeah, may have to answer.
Well, I, I think we have to talk through the timing of when we would bring that.
Okay.
It's a bit of a, um, so if part of this is legal advice, I'm just, I, I would want to move in camera to talk about it fully, but in public, I can say that I think the timing of that needs to be discussed. Um, and I don't believe for sure it would come on November fifth, it might come thereafter, depending on the decision of November fifth.
Maybe even after sporing by was approved. Okay. Um, so yes, we were given an option council to go in camera. I will bring that up right before we conclude this, in case anybody wants to. But my last question, I guess, is for Christina. Um, maybe not relevant to today, but these, but the area structure plan is linked so closely, the northeast area structure plan, um, said eight hundred thousand dollars for an MDP amendment. Is that what you said?
So MDP amendment and statutory plan amendment.
Which statutory plan is getting amended?
If, just playing it all out, if the northeast ASP is approved, that we would suggest you should probably look at the ASP for the full servicing area because you've now unlocked the whole of the labs. And then we can look at the whole phasing, timing, all of that. So it's not necessarily that you end up with, you know, a quarter that's maybe not contiguous. We've, we've got policies about that, but to, at this stage, if you've made the investment, that's unlocked.
You could, you know, the other point I would make is I, I would not advocate for pushing um, a plan to a ref that stood a chance of being denied. So, I think so. And so, you know, there would be a bunch of work that would have to happen, right, if it were approved.
And, and these are ballpark figures. We haven't investigated them because there's been no decision made. Once a decision is made, we'd go back, we'd analyze, look at our, you know, if there's reprioritization of council projects, you've only got so many people in your P and B department. They're bringing on quite a few big projects in the next year, year and a half. So what does that mean for an impact? Do we need to get additional resources, that type of thing, same with Johnny staff as well?
It's not about the ASP proper, it's about the alignment, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, um, that's coming November fifth too, the area structure plan, the charter, and the boring by law, right? Should be there for the others. Yes, everybody needs to show up on the fifth. Um, hold on just one sec. I'm just trying to prepare myself to argue this at the EMRB table.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
My question, what would, how, what's, what's the process after this goes ahead? Does it have to go to the EMRB?
Yeah. Yeah. They're not, not the same, not. So that's why I'm saying it's not really, we're not talking ASP today, but they're, they're linked, obviously.
And I don't know how far you want to go into that discussion, Mark, with being a brain of advertised and, yeah.
We can wait till the fifth to maybe get into that one, although I think if on the, when this comes to us on the fifth, we might need motions or something to venture down the road of MVP amendment, right? Because there, I don't, I don't like having plans misaligned, so.
Well, I, I think that's a discussion that we would have, should, again, we were not press, using a decision. Should council decide that that's where they want to go? I think, you know, we've, we've sort of had that mapped out and be prepared to any.
Got. There'll be some analysis with that.
Okay, that'll be good to see. Um, one last question, can we just bring up that map that I liked before, the benefiting areas?
National area?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, maybe this is a question for you, Anne. Um, there's a lot of land there undeveloped, but with existing area structure plans. So they will be developing, paying levies, servicing the debt, hopefully. Um, if the green area gets a blue, same kind of thing, developing, servicing the debt. It's that yellow area. It's got no even planned future area structure plans. Will your breakout of, of timing and servicing include that unknown?
That's something we could try to do some further, like FIA analysis, um.
Well, let's just assume it's, it's not developed for fifty years. So what does, what does that mean to the St. Albert taxpayer, I guess is what I'm asking.
And that's the, that's where we were saying is now, that's the impact now, where we're saying that one point eight percent will likely be higher if we both invest at the same time of um, the impact of the operating impacts and the cost of life cycle requirements. Because it's our, the city's infrastructure that we have to maintain and replace. So there is some potential impacts of investing same time, but that's like Christina said, with the new timing, we haven't analyzed how that's actually going to impact that.
No, no, that's gonna have that done by the fifth even, really.
But we will be able to, and that's where it's, we're seeing that seventy six million left. It's all these projects competing. So it's just, we're the priority and when we.
Yeah, but I can probably speak for council, we see debt very differently when it's completely offset levy recoverable. Completely different, right? Doesn't affect the taxes.
Right, unless the investment doesn't happen within the twenty five years.
And that's the hard part to predict. When we did project nine, I think the risk was low. Looking at you, Diane, because you were there, it felt like we were pretty confident the development would face with the servicing of the debt. Yes, and we also, and we also had a fairly good contingency at that point in the recovery fund, because it was the first time we had started doing it, right? So, so the risk with this is you've got, I, I don't know the percentages, but forty percent of that land area that we have no guarantee collecting that money back, right? So, so you're, you've got a portion of that debt potentially outstanding that we won't collect back within, within a time period. Sure, it will develop eventually. Um, but it's, is it be within the twenty, twenty five years that we take out the debt? It may not be. Um, and then if you have a similar situation on the west, um, you know, if, if development doesn't go quite as fast and it's not quite as much to support, they're going to have debt payments with not enough offset levies coming in to fund them, which, which, and taxes is the only other option if that happens, right? So we do have some contingency, but with all the projects that we've been doing, we're, we're getting pretty tight on that contingency and that was all.
You're bringing on, you'd be bringing on a significant amount of land that would probably look at a forty to fif- at minimum forty to fifty years worth of land supply. So you're not going to get your offsite levy projects paid back within that twenty five year timeframe.
Right, yeah. And policy wise, if we pay off the debt in twenty five years, and thirty years later, we start collecting offsite levies from that future development, it just goes into an offsite levy, it doesn't get returned back to the taxpayer, right? Even though they paid for it through taxes, yeah. It's not under current policy, but there would be, there would be opportunities to look at that. The offset levy recovery fund actually does have some, some opportunities within it, even as it sits today, um, that that could be considered. If taxpayers ended up having to fund a portion of the debt related to this. Right. You know, we could, if, if there isn't a line within that policy that allows it now, it could certainly, could certainly be looked at. But again, you want to be, that money to be sitting in that fund for the next offset levy project that you need to support as well, so.
Decisions for the next generation again. I, go ahead. I think that you have a good point, Anne. So like, if we're really looking at a fifty year buildup, but we're looking at a twenty five year timeline, then I don't see how it will not have an effect on the tax at some point. Um, unless I'm missing something.
It's totally going to.
So, because that's the only thing we're using to pay off the tax, the debt is the recovery. And there's just no way that recovery is going to come in at that pace unless something magical happens.
So we have, but we still have other areas in the city that are still developing that we're not invested. We've already invested in the servicing years and years ago, that we will be collecting offsite levies on as those areas develop out. Uh, the, the ones that's already within our current boundary. And so that money as well can be used towards these ones.
So, um, you know, so when people, when they pay in for the offsite levies, and let's say we, it goes into that fund. Let's say that, that our little balloon fund goes away, we've spent it all. Can we then go into the offsite levy fund if we have extra to pay those debts that happen to go to the taxpayer as our second alternative? Can the taxpayer be a third alternative and the amount is going into the offsite levies? It's not in a balloon payment, be our second alternative?
So you're asking for the offsite levy recovery fund, which we've been paid back. You're now talking about the part of money that they're collecting within the offsite levies.
So you know how we have, like, we have money in the, I'm just trying to figure this out, because it's not everything. We're saying we're going to use money that's potentially not coming directly from that attachment area that could be used to pay for it. We happen to have some good years and it accumulates. Can we use that towards debt payments, or is that not going to be allowed to be used towards debt payments of this current project? Like, is it just going to be like, whether we paid for the offsite levy recovery that year, or goes to tax or balloon or taxes, or can it be offsite levy balloon? Um, the offset levy fund that we've accumulated and then taxes, can there be a third?
The offsite levy recovery fund is that fund that we're, that we use to service the debt? So that's the first. So when that goes short, then we have to, then within taxes, because there's not that balloon then. That is the fund there.
But we have like ten million dollars in like a little, maybe it's five now, I don't know, did we reduce it, but?
Yeah, so it's in that reserve, in that offset levy recovery.
It's just sitting in that, that.
So the actual offsite levies that we collect, we very rarely actually have money sitting in that reserve because at the end of the year, we basically clear it out and pay back any prior front-ending parties, which is mostly the city. So that's how the money goes into our reserve from the actual offsite levies. The only one Donnie was talking about is that we do have some, because it has to stay in its own pots, like water, sanitary. We do have some actual dollars sitting in the water reserve because we didn't provide any water projects. So we couldn't get that money back. So that money's sitting in the water reserve, which we will use to help directly pay for the water line for this project.
Maybe I'm going crazy into accounting, but I'm just thinking like, sometimes the amount we're collecting offsite levies would exceed our debt payment. In which case, do we just take out the full amount for future?
In which case, do we just take out the full amount for future debt?
Oh, yeah, it just goes into the reserve. It just all, a hundred percent of it goes into the reserve. So some years we will use less and some years.
More, okay. So as long as that number is enough to cover whatever our debt payments are for that year.
Right.
Good. Even if it's, like, if it's more, then we'll have more.
Right, but the challenge is, you know, what we're talking about is we have the potential.
Yeah, I understand.
Sixty percent of that money. So at some point, it's got a lot of balance.
That's where that risk thing on the November third I'm looking for, the fifteenth, looking forward to seeing, so that we just understand really what we're looking at here. I mean, they could be developed. We don't know, but I, there's definitely a risk thing. We make the assumption it wouldn't be or it won't be for less than our timeline and what we're looking at. Okay, that's all. That's why I always look at you developers back there, like buy that land, take on.
You have to have online if you need any other clarification. Want to have anything to add? Not just Tanya. Tanya has anything to add? Can I ask her to add to the?
Yeah, sure. Anyone can jump in, for sure.
Uh, no, I think Diane covered it really well, so we're good.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move in camera to have.
Yeah, I was gonna, I think we probably.
Use that.
Want to, I guess.
No, because you're paying me.
Yeah, I have no more questions. So I'll take your motion. Do you have it ready?
Uh, that the standing committee is in accordance with sections twenty four one A G and twenty five one B C of the freedom of information and privacy.
For the offset levy agreement, um, use that, you have to use it or invest in those assets.
I was probably telling Mike not to leave. Okay, I think, yeah, you keep the implicated staff.
So we're not going to come back to discuss public, we're done.
I don't know how much, probably. All right, a call for the vote. And Council Jolly's online now? I can't see her and I can't see her vote.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
It's all the same money. Sanitary can go to sanitary for future.
Who's got the breakout room controls?
Are we still recording right now? I know, but.
It looks like it.
I just want to make sure I understand some of the investment decisions and priorities and tax, tax implications.
Negotiation between us and Sturgent County. And you're going to use your R S V P.
I won't go very.
African still here, is that okay?
pave the trail, Ken.
Yeah, yeah, might pay for one.